One nation, under God, invisible with the delivery of justice for all. Honor to Texas law, our flag, allegiance, leading Texas, one state, under God, one and invisible.
Oh, thank you very much. Brother Graham, thank you. So, again, I'd like to welcome everyone, and we do have a quorum, so I'd like to call this meeting to order at this time. Ms. Waskey, do we have any citizens' comments?
No comments.
No comments. Well, item number one is consider and take action from previously -- on minutes from previously held meetings of Commissioners Court on July 30th, 2019. Are there any additions, deletions, or comments?
Hearing non-judged, I move we accept the minutes as presented for the Commissioners Court regular session of July the 30th, 2019.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Geislin, seconded by Commissioner McCam, to approve the minutes of Commissioners Court for July 30th. All those in favor? Item passes. Item two, consider and take action on minutes from previously held special meeting of Commissioners Court on July 23rd, 2019. And for the public's knowledge, this is from our public hearing that we held over vote centers on the evening of July 23rd. Are there any other additions, comments? Entertained a motion?
If first non-judged, I'd like to approve the minutes, special meeting minutes, for July 23rd, 2019, that we had on -- at 6:30 PM.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Tootley, to approve the minutes of the special meeting Commissioners Court on July 23rd, 2019. All those in favor? Item passes. Item three, consider and take action to accept the results of public auction of a tract of land described as AB 132G Chivano survey, Cherokee shores, section C, lot 642 on Double Bridge Road, and provide authorization for the county judge to execute deed fulfilling -- or fulfilling conveyance of property to the high bidder. Commissioner Tootley?
Yes, Judge. The -- some three or four weeks ago, we placed this on the agenda to sell this piece of property, and on July 30th, it was sold on the courthouse to the highest bidder for $200. It was a hot commodity lot, there was one bidder. So, that person is a neighbor to this lot, and the -- we've -- the bidder brought the $200 cashier's check to your office, and I believe it is attached inside the agenda, a copy of it.
Thank you. County attorney, you did do work on the warranty deed? Yes, sir, we do.
Yes.
You want to speak toward?
Prepared special warranty deed, it's ready to go, we accepted the $200, and I know that it's already been delivered, so it's all ready to go, sign my phone, and convey it to the highest bidder.
Questions for Commissioner or the county attorney? Hearing done, entertain a motion.
Hang on, my computer messed up. Judge, I move to allow -- to accept the results of a public auction of a tract of land described as AB 132G Chivano survey, Cherokee shores, section C, lot 642, on Double Bridge Road, and provide authorization for the county judge to execute the deed fulfilling the conveyance of property to the high bidder. Do I need to name them? Or just high bidder's file? Do I need to name the high bidder, or?
That's your motion?
Yes, sir.
Take it.
Motion made by Commissioner Tootley, seconded by Commissioner Thomas, to approve the -- approve and accept the sale, and authorize county judge to execute the warranty deed. Any further comments? All those in favor? Get down to that one as fast as you can.
I won't be a guinea pig again, but...
You only be a guinea pig once, so...
What about it?
Item four, consider and take action to allow the Henderson County Sheriff's Office to enter into an agreement with Renal Care Group Texas Incorporated for inmate dialysis treatment. Sheriff?
Thank you. Good morning, Court.
Good morning.
This is a agreement for inmates in jail. If they need dialysis, we would actually have someone local here in town to be able to assist us. It doesn't happen often, but it does happen from time to time, and actually, right now, we do have one inmate in custody that does need dialysis treatment, and it's hard to find a location that will accept an inmate. With this contract, it'll give us a better rate. This company will actually do it on a case-by-case basis, but the rate is higher. So, if we fill out the -- this yearly contract and agree to enter into this agreement, then we get a cheaper rate, whether we use the contract or not, and it's good for one year. And this one actually had -- is requesting my signature if the court allows it, but that's pretty much what it's about.
Questions for the sheriff?
About how many times are we using them right now, or will be using them?
Like I said, I've got one inmate right now that will, and he will be out there three times a week.
Okay.
And county attorney has looked over this and requested one change, and they made that change in this agreement, so it's been pretty easy to work with.
I think what Commissioner Thomas was asking, if you look at it over the last five years, how many times have we had a situation? It's about twice, isn't it?
We -- yes, I mean, it just doesn't happen often. I think this year, we've had one other patient we ended up having to take to a facility in Waco. This facility's here in Athens, but it doesn't happen often. We just need somewhere to be able to go if it does happen.
Right. Thank you, Sheriff.
Kind of an insurance policy.
Yes, sir.
It doesn't happen often, it doesn't have -- happen often, but it's happened twice this year already.
Yes, sir.
And this is case-by-case, or here?
This will be disagreements for one year.
Okay.
You previously were having to transport to Waco?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And then we got a call yesterday from a company in Kaufman that would take us, but I told them to hold off because this was on the agenda, and it's right here in Athens.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
No questions, Judge.
Entertain a motion for the sheriff to sign.
Motion to approve with authorization for the sheriff to sign.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Geislin, seconded by Commissioner McCam, to allow the Henderson County Sheriff's Office to enter into an agreement with Renal Care Group Texas Incorporated for inmate dialysis treatment with the sheriff's authorization to sign. All those in favor? Item passes. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Next item is item five, consider and take action to allow the sheriff's office to enter into an agreement with Caney City, to enter Caney City municipal warrants into Odyssey. Sheriff?
Yes, sir. Caney City Chief approached me and their city secretary, and they've been having issues with their city warrants for Class Cs, and they asked if we would enter those into our local system, and they would bring them over, and then, of course, they'll pay, you know, a charge for every warrant that we keep up with. I've got plenty of staff over there, Sarah Nutt and Sergeant Teal, Christina Teal, they do these on a day-to-day basis. This -- we don't really have any other cities contract -- municipalities contracting with us for this, but it's not going to be a burden to our office, and it will help out Caney City, and it'll bring a little bit into the county. And they're talking maybe -- they're not going to drop them all on us at once, but we're talking maybe a thousand to 1,500 warrants.
Questions for the sheriff?
Have you talked with IT? There's no issues with them being allowed to do this?
What we'll end up having to do is just add another court onto Odyssey.
Okay.
Shouldn't be any issues at all.
Okay.
This was discussed when we were originally doing the conversion.
Yep.
And we were discussing this capability then, and I couldn't remember the full context of it, because we were concerned about it polluting the data or something. Am I remembering this correctly? That's why setting it up as another court keeps it siloed?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, right now, the courts that we have are our county courts here in the system, and we'll just set up a municipal court.
Okay.
And all these will be registered under that, where you can run a report for just that court, and everything should be fine.
Okay.
Five dollars a pop, five dollars per warrant.
Per house. Any other questions or comments?
No questions, Judge.
Entertain a motion.
So moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Geislin, seconded by Commissioner Tootley, to allow the sheriff's office to enter into an agreement with Caney City for the entering of Caney City municipal warrants into the Odyssey system, and authorization on the sheriff -- authorization for sheriff to sign.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Item passes. Item number six, consider and take action to allow the sheriff's office to renew the agreement with Smith County for the East Texas Auto Theft Task Force. Sheriff?
Yes, sir. This is an agreement that we've had in place for, I think we started this back in probably 2011, somewhere around there. It's been a great program. They -- basically, they pay pretty much 80% of an investigator's salary who is office at my office, and he works auto theft crimes. It's a successful task force. They -- it also, if we have issues over here, it's a five or six-man team, and they'll come to Henderson County and help us. They have many, many times, they continue to do so. It's a good thing, and we're just asking to continue on and enter into the agreement with Smith County. This one will actually take the county judge's signature and my signature also, if you do so approve, but it's been a good thing here in Henderson County.
Questions for the sheriff?
No questions. So, they're paying -- we're paying for the money in here, or?
Yes, sir. Our --
Our match?
Our total part will be $12,212, $2,000 of that will be in-kind services with fuel, and then the cash match on the salary was $10,212. And then they pick up the rest of the salary and benefit package.
He is housed at?
Here.
Here in Henderson County?
Yes, sir. He spends -- every Monday morning, he goes to Tyler's. They have a briefing over there every Monday morning, and he's usually back in Athens by noon, and he stays here the rest of the week.
And he's one of your guys, not?
Yes, sir. Investigator Robert Powers is the investigator on the auto theft test.
And he's been doing it?
Right, Sheriff, most of the time.
He has been doing it for going on four years. When we first entered into this agreement, Michael Shelley was there.
Right.
Then Investigator Shelley retired, and Robert Powers stepped up, and he's been there since.
Well, it's a good thing. I know it does a lot of -- there's a lot of benefits for our county.
Yes, it does. And it gives us a lot of -- they've got a lot of technology, and they also furnished Investigator Powers a truck, and they can find stuff out a whole lot quicker than we can with the technology that they give our investigators to be able to search for VIN numbers and be able to track history of vehicles, where our normal patrol队 just don't have that capability.
Okay. Any other questions?
No questions, Judge.
Entertain a motion with the all necessary signatures.
So moved to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Geislin, seconded by Commissioner McCam, to -- excuse me, take action to allow the sheriff's office to renew the agreement with Smith County for the East Texas Auto Theft Task Force with all necessary signatures. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Item passes. Sheriff, thank you. Item seven, consider and take action on application to the Secretary of State for Henderson County to implement vote centers. Ms. Hernandez?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
How's everyone?
Good.
Good. Yes, sir. We're wanting to request action be taken on submitting an application to the Secretary of State for us to be a countywide polling place. This is where, on Election Day, it's operated exactly as early voting, and you could go anywhere, at any location on Election Day and cast your vote.
Okay. This is a continuation of the weeks-long process, taking input from the public, going through the numbers, getting all this information put together. We've met all of the procedural criteria.
Yes, sir, we have. We've gone through, you know, journey -- our conveying our elections commissions, they voted for us to move forward on it. We've also had our committee member meetings, we also had our public hearings, so now we just need to take action in court on whether or not we want to become a county polling place.
Questions for Ms. Hernandez?
Well, a couple of questions I had that came to mind last night, you just answered, so...
Okay.
I was thinking we put the cart before the horse, but we -- you were supposed to have the meetings and then apply for the deal, so...
Yes, sir.
I'm good.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Thomas?
The deadline, I was just -- is it August?
Yes, it is.
22nd? Is that one that we have to have that written, turned in?
And the application is ready based on what we have.
It is ready to go.
So, it's just waiting for approval from you.
Any negatives from anybody? I haven't, but...
I haven't. You know, we probably won't know of anything negative until after an election is conducted, and then, you know, which is why we have to have another meeting afterwards, a public hearing as well, to see even what the issues may have been, or what the public feels like afterwards.
Exactly.
So, but yes, that's a requirement as well. We do have to have an additional public hearing meeting after the election, so...
Commissioner McCam?
Have you decided on the method we're going to use to inform the voters?
Yes, sir. We do want to send out head of household. We're also going to give it to all of our candidates that come in in November, put it in their candidate packets so that they can, as they're going door-to-door, hand them out to those voters and letting them know as well. We will put it in newspaper, we will put it on social media, so...
Select the one lady said in one of the forums, what if there's two sisters that live in that house? Will we do both of those?
Sherry did mention that. We can, we can do whatever...
Well, I'm just saying that is...
Head of household, okay, in general, when I send a mass mail-out, which we'll be doing at the end of this year, we're going to be sending out those almost 52,000 voter registration cards, we get about 6,000, 7,000 back. So, you know, that's an average of getting all that postage back. It's going to be a lot more expensive sending out those trifos than it would be our voter registration cards. So, you know, that's a decision we can make as a whole.
So, and when you say head of household, that's going to be through the, like, the census, or the person that owns the property?
That's going to be through our voter registration file, which is in VOTAC. So, all of the registered voters that we have in there, we have the capability of running something that's called a head of household label, and then we'll just put them on those slides and send those out.
Commissioner Geislin?
So, with the vote today, does that mean we're closing seven voting locations?
Yes, tonight, yes, it would be the seven.
What happens if the Secretary of State determines that we're not successful?
Then we would go back to regular polling places. I haven't heard that to happen as of yet, so...
Well, with counties, in the reading of various publications and the election law, it states that there's only four counties that can move into vote centers on an annualized basis. That's four counties under 100,000.
That is correct. They allow four slots of counties that are under the population of 100,000. Yes. We submitted our intent months ago, so they've had our intent this long, so they're awaiting
But as I think you answered, if we would be viewed by the Secretary of State as unsuccessful, we would have to revert back to the 26 locations.
Of course.
So, we close them, and then we reopen them.
Yeah, which we...
No, I'm sorry. You're also eligible to reapply the following year. You can turn around and submit a random application, because it's good, not only for the general election, but you could also apply for the primary that's coming up. And so, you are allowed to reapply if you're unsuccessful on the first go-round.
Keep in mind, that's something we do anyway during a constitutional amendment. We usually go down to 13 boxes.
I know that, but for vote centers, we were going to -- the number that we were going to go to for the 2020 primary and the 2020 November election. Well, the way the reductions have been done, if we find that there's a lot of blowback from Commissioner McCam's location, 4W, or one of my locations, Berryville, the way it's set up, we can never bring it back, because the law states that with precinct two going to three voting locations, no other precinct can be above 50% higher than that, so we're limited at six, because precinct two went to three. That is a concern.
It is one of the limiting factors, due to the fact of the demographic and the geographic makeup of the two different distinct precincts.
I mean, I know most people probably in this room today may never have been to Berryville, and they think it's, you know, just a speck on the map. There's over 1,000 people living in Berryville. I know some of you may have heard me go on about Berryville, and it's seven miles from, six and a half miles from Coffee City. They can vote there. And, of course, they can vote early, because they could go to Chandler. Or if you live in Berryville or Coffee City, you do not drive over to Chandler, because you probably work in Palestine or in Tyler. The closest way to get to those two locations is on 155. 155 does not run through Chandler. Also, looking at past election results, those two locations do not vote early. So, we have no empirical data if we should close either one of them, or if we're closing the right one. Maybe we should be closing Coffee City. There's an internet issue there. I don't know. That goes back to, number one, I support vote centers.
I know you do.
And I think I've made that perfectly clear. I am concerned that we're rushing this thing to close a bunch of voting locations without the data to substantiate if we're closing the right ones, especially, you know, if we're not successful. And I agree with what the county attorney said, we would just reapply. But I don't like the idea of closing and then having to reopen, especially on the eve of a 2020 presidential election. I would prefer that we have all the boxes open, and we leave them open with vote center operations through the 2020 election, and then we close them with the data that we have collected on a presidential election. I think that would be fair to the voters, and it would give us a very clear -- I'll repeat that, a very clear set of data, a data set, to know that we're closing the right And I know the reason we want to close them. It's very clear in Ms. Tenenberger's email, it comes down to finding election workers. I just don't believe that is the right reason to start closing boxes, because we cannot I would suggest that the newspapers in Henderson County run articles pointing out that we need election volunteers. Is the same speech that I gave about volunteers for fire departments, they're having the same problem. I will not just throw millennials under the bus, as I did before. The people that are volunteering are getting older and older. We need some young folks to start volunteering to support our elections, as well as other volunteer organizations like our fire departments. And I can go on about a few more, including the library, since Michelle is here. That's my position.
I understand.
How many machines would we have to purchase to?
To get through? Probably five, five scanners.
Five what?
$30,000.
We'd have to purchase five more machines to get 26 voting boxes.
So that we would have spares, yeah? That's what I would recommend, five.
But on that point, Commissioner, I've struggled with that.
Why?
Because I don't like to spend any more money than we need to. My record is pretty clear on that. However, without the knowledge, we're closing a bunch of boxes where we used to have 26 locations, we're narrowing that down to 19. The extra equipment we may need anyway, because of the volume at certain locations. I mean, we can go back to a May election, or no, a November election, where there was Constitution as well as a school bond, and we did not have enough equipment, and there were people standing in two lines outside the door at 7 o'clock. We don't know at this point in time, with vote centers, if they come to your location on Election Day, and the line is out the door, they may walk down the street and go to the First Baptist Recreational Outreach Center and want to vote there, but that line may be longer than the one at your office, because we may not have enough election -- voting equipment staged at the right locations. That brings you back to my original argument on having this empirical data, because we may need the other $30,000 worth of equipment that we needed for 26 voting locations. So, we may not be buying $30,000 worth of additional equipment to keep 26 locations open. We may need it anyway to make sure we have enough equipment at voting centers in the future.
Commissioner, your point is very good. I'm the same way. I've thought about these voting centers. We've had the committees to look at it, everybody didn't -- there wasn't a question. Of course, we don't know until we have that election if it is the right one to close. And there is some questions about that, but my thought was the committees looked at it, Denise had looked at it pretty hard, I'm just kind of going by what her recommendation is. And again, we may not have the right ones open and the right ones closed. You have a good point.
And don't get me wrong, I send about 400 away from my location every election, because they come in here thinking... they come in here thinking that it's still early voting, right? I could have already voted those 400. If you look at my numbers on Election Day, mine is one of the lowest. But that's not because they're not walking in there. That's not because I couldn't have already voted them. It's because they're in the wrong precinct, and I can't vote them unless I vote them provisionally. If that would have happened, maybe, possibly, Bothell wouldn't have the numbers that they have right then and there. Or maybe, The Rock wouldn't have the numbers that they have, because I would have already been voting them there at Precinct 3, which is an early voting site, as well as Chandler and as well as Seven Points. They send away just as many voters as I do. So those numbers, any way you see them, are not going to be accurate because we've already sent them to two or three polling places, right? And we all know, you've gotten those calls, that they've sent me here, and it was the wrong location. Now I have to go here. We all know that. This is only allowing that voter and giving that voter more opportunities, more options. When they walk in that door, they can go ahead and cast their ballot. We're not sending them away. We're going ahead and voting them.
And I'll say again, I support what you just said.
I know. I know you do. You always have.
I support the vote centers from the first conference that I attended with Judge McKinney and yourself and Tyler in 2015.
Exactly.
And I even have gone back and reviewed the presentation given by Lubbock County at that particular conference. So let no one think for one moment that I'm opposed to vote centers, because I am not. I'm opposed to closing prematurely a bunch of locations that I don't know if they're the correct ones or not. And we won't know until we have empirical data to substantiate it.
We can still apply to be a vote center.
Definitely.
And leave some of them open.
Yes. Oh, definitely.
Because we're applying to be a vote center, don't mean we have to close a bunch of them.
That's correct. We do not have to close.
You don't have to close any of them.
Matter of fact, Lubbock County recommended in that particular conference in 2015 not to close any more than 20%. We're closing 27%. The maximum that we could close
No.
Is 35%.
Oh, yes.
That would be the 17 number that Denise mentioned in one of the workshops that we had. Seventeen is her maximum.
That was the first proposal.
That was where she would like to be. That is the absolute maximum until we are in the vote center system, and then you can reduce it to 50%.
If you choose to do so.
That was going to be my next question, was that if on worst-case scenario, I say worst-case, if we have all 26 present open, if we do become a successful applicant, that clears the way for a reduction up to 50%?
Correct. Yes, it would.
Okay.
I think this is going to be a great asset for Henderson County. But I'm going to have to agree with Commissioner Geeson. I would rather wait till we had a little more information before we shut too many of them down. I know it's going to put us in a bind in getting our volunteers, but we're just looking at one more year. We've been trying to do this for five now. You know, I don't know that one more year is going to hurt us that much more.
You're right.
And we're on the pathway.
Of course, yes. We've been working on this for five years.
And I think all of us are in agreement that this is what we want to do.
I think it's what's best for the voters.
I just don't know if we all want to jump head, you know, into the deep end yet.
Yeah. Do keep in mind, there are several locations that you're still going to have to close, like Willow Springs, like, you know, I mean, there's some that are not even you're able to do the same.
In that particular case, and I'm not speaking
I know you're not.
Precinct 1.
I know you're not.
Willow Springs is a voting location that has a problem, and you've identified a new place. We say, we're not closing Willow Springs, we're moving Willow Springs.
We're relocating. That's correct.
That's totally different.
I understand.
Totally different than closing the door on a voting location. You move it somewhere else because it isn't providing ADA, parking, air conditioning, internet, bathroom facilities, et cetera. One of the reasons we closed Finn Castle, because it didn't have permanent power. It had to have wall spray three days ahead of the election to make sure all of the insects was out of the building.
It didn't have facilities for people who were there working for 14 hours.
That is correct. Well, they brought in a motor home when they got to use it, but the motor home wasn't ADA compliant. So, you know, I mean, you know, I am a member of the court that has gone through the closing exercise. And for those that haven't heard this speech, in 2011, Precinct 4 had 13 voting locations. Thirteen. I closed five. I had hair when I closed them. It was not pleasant. I closed the oldest voting location in Henderson County. My wife was at a location two weeks ago and heard someone still complaining about the closing of the historical voting location. That was nine years ago that we did that.
And just like you said, I mean, there are some of them we need to close.
Exactly.
And it would be a lot easier on all of us if we had one around the corner from one. You know, we've got that in some situations, whether it's one a couple hundred yards from another.
Right.
But then Mr. Geeson has some on Lake that are seven or eight miles away from the coast.
Exactly. It's a rural area, you know. That's how it is over there. It's not like in Athens or, you know, in Seven Points area. There's locations everywhere, you know. I know the difference. I do. I do understand.
In this discussion, there were three identified moves that needed to take place. That was Willow Springs to Crossroads. That was at Brownsboro. And then there was the need of moving Payne Springs Community Center to the fire station.
And Pinnacle.
Pinnacle.
Pinnacle Fire Station to Payne Springs Fire Station.
Right.
That's the...
Well, I was following the line of, instead of closures, just what moves needed to take place. And I believe the discussion was, is that the Payne Springs new fire station would provide the needed items above the community center specifically.
That's a true statement.
So as we're following this train of thought, if we choose to keep full 26 open, we need to entertain the idea of handling these moves so that we meet to meet those needs.
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, yeah. As well as Brownsboro, moving to, you know, the church. That's a 100% improvement in the location.
Absolutely.
Judge, you also have that one that's at the Pentecostal Church in Gumbrough?
I'm sorry?
No, it's here in Athens.
United Pentecostal.
No, 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 no. In Precinct 2.
At the St. Peters?
St. Peters Lutheran.
The St. Peters Lutheran Church. It's just, what, a half a mile to a mile from the City Hall in Gumbrough. That, you know, is, and talking with the Gumbrough Council is, they're all in favor of shutting that one down. But, and it's all about demographics to where Precinct 2 is, to his comment, from demographics in Precinct 2 to rural in Precinct 3 and Precinct 4. So, and the confusion in Payne Springs is, is they come out of Esquire Estates, going to Walmart and saying, there's a voting sign. I'm going to go in there and vote. And they forget that they've got to go back to Payne, the fire station, and then they don't go vote because they go home. Yep. So the demographics in Gumbrough and Payne Springs, are those two being moved or shut down is great for our area.
Right.
So, but it's not in, the rural areas are that number that they're looking for.
The more, even complicates issue more is the fact of where it says that Precinct 2, being the lowest number of boxes, can only have 50% more in that precinct. And that's why I was following the line of just the moves instead of the closures.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we can even keep the Lutheran Church open to have four to help three and four out, Precinct 3 and Precinct 4 out. So, I mean, it's not a diehard that... I think the problem at the Pinnacle Club Fire Station is, is that they use that fire station as a storage of where her election workers were, and one of them kind of got hurt down there of some stuff. And so that's why she doesn't like that area. It's not probably ADA. Does it have?
Yeah. And then, you know, once it's dark, it doesn't have lights outside. No, it doesn't have the internet. You know, the facility at the time, one of the bays was damaged, wasn't even closing. We have expensive equipment in there. We have to set up the day before. So, yeah, I mean, it has several issues. They schedule garage sales, and they fill up the kitchen. So the people that are there, I mean, they don't have access to the kitchen. So, you know, it's hard when you're working 14 to 16 hours a day.
Currently, how many voting locations are in Precinct 4?
Eight.
Eight.
Eight. So we need at least four.
Yeah.
So we can leave St. Peters Lutheran Church?
St. Peters, Gumbrough, Eustis.
And Payne Springs Fire Station.
And Payne Springs Fire Station. I guess it comes to a toss-up of which would you rather have, Payne Springs Fire Station or the Pentecostal here in Athens, which is a Precinct 2 box? Because you got to have four.
Technically, you have to have one.
Well, you can take the Pentecostal Church because it would be more feasible for, in a demographic deal, where the St. Peters is closer to the Gumbrough City Hall.
Right. Well, all I'm trying to do is that
To see which one.
You have the two Gumbroughs. You have Eustis, and you have one Payne Springs. There's your four. Now, you've got these, you've got Pinnacle, and you've got Pentecostal. Are you wanting to?
St. Lutheran. Oh, the United Pentecostal?
The United Pentecostal. That's why I'm saying, you've got those two, because we know the difficulties with the United Pentecostal.
Right.
So we would have the four. We could drop those two and still leave four in compliance.
Yeah, everything open in Precincts 3 and 4.
I think the point from the court, we love the vote centers. Everybody here loves the vote centers. There's not a discussion. In my precinct, all the locations are spread where it's pretty fair. So it doesn't affect Precinct 1. I have one location that we were looking to close because it was just not a very good location.
And they've asked us to relocate.
And they've asked us to relocate. So there's one that I think, you know, in my area. But again, the point is, is to, we don't know where the voters are going to come in Precinct 3 and Precinct 4, where they're going to be happy. And I'm all for opening them all too. I just went through the committees. I went through several meetings, public hearings, and nobody brought that up to me. But just my point is, I love the voting centers. I want everybody to understand, that is the way to go. There is nobody here on this court that's disputing that at all.
Oh, no. I know that, and you've all stated it. I know that everybody wants to become vote centers because we know it benefits the voter. I know that.
Just from looking at this, we could close the three, still be in compliance to do what four needs, and make our moves, and still have some savings. Well, I mean, or we could, we could make the moves and not close any. It's kind of...
Well, the only reason why St. Peter Lutheran Church is used is because of the county. It does not affect the city election in Gumbrough.
I mean, I'm liking that idea myself. That way, we do get some closure. We do get the moves. We still will have to procure some equipment for multitude of reasons, not just because of this discussion, but a multitude of reasons. I mean, that's the happy medium.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, I mean, I was, a week ago, I was willing to compromise and close one box.
I know.
Okay? I was willing to go ahead and close 4W. But with the law, my hand is forced to close two. And I, that's when the road "closed" sign came up. I agree with what you're saying, Judge. If Precinct 2 would leave St. Peters open and go ahead and close the United Pentecostal, and then I guess it's the Payne Springs Community Center.
Well, you would close Payne Springs South and move Payne Springs Community, which is BSN.
Yeah. Well, you have two boxes, and you're moving both of those over to the Payne Springs Firehouse, whichever one you want to say. You're closing two, but you're leaving one open. So. And what did Commissioner Thomas decide on Caney City?
Commissioner? Do you feel comfortable with, or would you prefer to leave it open?
I prefer to leave it open.
Okay.
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 So that leaves Precinct 1 with six locations, Precinct 2 with four locations, and everything else stays the same in 3 and 4.
Commissioner Tullie, are you okay with that?
I'm just going to, I am, because of the, the problems that we had during my campaign of pushing people back to the fire station, to the deal, and they couldn't vote here, and they couldn't vote there. I think, and the new fire station is right there on the side of 198. And now nobody has to worry about where the lines are of the voting and where you have to go. I think it's great. And I think Gumbrough's going to like it too, because everybody's going to be going to the same place. You don't have to tell them, you know, if you're on Welch Lane this side, that you've got to go vote at the Lutheran Church, or if you're on that side, you go to the City Hall. So I feel comfortable, and I've already talked to the council, and so they're good in Gumbrough. And the problems that she has faced over at the community center, and with the air conditioning floor and no internet, I think that people are going to, and it's going to bring more people into that fire station that hadn't been in there before, into that community room. But it's big enough that, I'm telling you, it's going to be a big, it's going to be a big box.
Commissioner, I think they're going to vote in Chandler, and Brownsboro, and Rock, and I'm going to vote in Chandler. I can tell you. I'm going to Tyler that day. I can't wait to vote in Chandler.
I know. After we find out the information and we're able to look at it on paper, we might be able to close several.
Absolutely.
Exactly.
I'm all in to do that.
I think, you know, we may be able to close several. We may say, well, there's nobody voting here. They're all going to already vote, and they're all voting in Athens, and they're all voting in Chandler. But I'd like to see that.
Before you can fix it, you have to measure it. I think it was a quote from Kelvin, and that's all I'm asking. Let us measure it, and then we'll fix it.
This is your vote, guys. I'll just hear. I mean, so, I mean, you're the deciding, you know, you have to make this. I can't make this.
Okay. Good to know.
So what are we going to do with? How many numbers?
24 is the count that I have. 24 locations. And that also includes the three moves. That's moving Willow Springs to Crossroads, the Brownsboro Community Center to the Faith Baptist Church, and Payne Springs Community to the fire station.
And Pinnacle Club.
Pinnacle is a closure, is one of the closures. That's how we got down to 26, or down to 24. They're voting over there. Pinnacle Station's a closure, and Pentecostal, United Pentecostal are closures.
Maybe this will help. Payne Springs North and Payne Springs South will be combined to vote at the Payne Springs Fire Station.
I love that. This is confusing.
I'm staying on numbers. I'm trying to get the count.
And for your edification, Commissioner, back in 2011, when I was closing all these boxes, we added the Payne Springs extra box because of the population growth that we had to have Payne Springs broke. that we had to have Payne Springs broken into North and South. Because you had five boxes over there, and it went to six because of redistricting.
Right. Yeah.
I hate to act like old Father Time over here.
My final point is that everybody's going to love to vote wherever they're at that day. They're going to go to the Crossroad School, and they're going to vote while they're down there. They're going to go to Chandler, they're going to vote. It's going to be a lot better.
Yep.
For everyone.
The issue, and I would like for you to bring this up, Denise, the state is allowing for a higher reimbursement to the parties this year for election workers, because this plays into maybe what the commissioner was leaning into as an incentive. Could you speak to that a little bit?
Yes. Legislature approved for them to raise the salary of our election workers during primary and primary runoffs. Originally, they only reimbursed them eight dollars a worker, and now it's $12. And the delivery fee that they paid them was 15. Of course, the county always paid them their 25. Now, they'll be paying them 25. The issue that I have with that is that when it comes down to a general election and we drop them down to $9.50, we may lose work.
And that's why I was wanting that brought out, is that if we increase to match the state and our vote, our poll workers, we will have a retention, and who knows, it may gather a few more in, looking for...
That's something to consider this afternoon.
So... Okay. Any, any further discussion? Okay. To recap, three moves and 24 boxes. That's what I'm, I'm seeing. Is that a concurrence?
Three moves, 24 boxes.
Three moves, 24 boxes. Okay. Yes, sir?
Let's call it locations.
Locations. Very good point. We have to begin to stop referring to these as boxes.
Correct.
Because of, there's two issues. There's your voting locations, and there is your voting district. Me, I live in 2E. You live in 2PSS? Or north? North. We refer to those as voting boxes many times in the vernacular. In the future, that is going to be a misnomer, because under the vote system, those are truly districts, because it breaks that tie of the discussion of the voting box being in every district under the vote center system. So, we'll stumble along with this, especially when redistricting takes place in a couple of years, but it's a good point. So, any other discussion? We'll entertain a motion if we can cobble one together.
I was hoping you were going to do that.
I can suggest one, but...
Three, uh, three closures and 24 locations?
Two closures.
Two closures?
Three moves with 24 locations.
So moved to approve.
But at, at the same time in the motion, we have to...
Announce?
Announce that we're moving to vote zones.
Yes. I'll make a suggestion for a motion, being that we approve the submission of the application for vote centers with the aforementioned changes to the plan that was presented. That would be my suggestion for a motion.
I think you covered the motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, seconded by Commissioner Tootley, to move forward with the application for vote center status with the changes to the plan of 24 voting boxes with the three moves, Willis, with the three moves.
How about 24 locations?
Twenty-four locations. Much better. And here, I done flipped and went back to boxes after I chastised everybody. Any, any further discussion? I would like to say, Denise, committee members, thank you for your efforts. As the requirement, as the state law goes, your input was crucial to all of this. I just want to appreciate you for your time. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes. Thank you very much. Yes, sir?
Denise?
Yes, sir.
You're probably aware Dallas County is, is going to vote centers. Basically, they're on the same timeframe as we are. I would encourage you, as well as the IT department, to take a look at Dallas County's website. They have a tremendous amount of information and scheduling on their website to help educate the people. I think that would be a real good model to follow, because I'm sure we can make changes to your page that links it to the rollout of vote centers. No further comments.
Gentlemen, I just caught myself in a mistake. That is two closures, not three in, in the motion. That should be two closures.
That's correct.
Three moves. Two closures, three moves.
I'll still vote for it.
Ruling from the county attorney? Okay. Okay, let's get on to other business. Item, item eight, consider and take action on selection of the salary grievance committee. Gentlemen, we did this a couple of months ago. We drew six names. We had two takers. There were individuals that no longer lived at those locations and a couple of flat, um, thank you, but no thank you. We don't wish to participate. This time, we need to do, repeat the process. We'll draw six names and get this moving so we can find our final public member to the salary grievance committee. So, any questions? Ms. Iwoski, if you would, draw the names and read them aloud.
Wanda Stevenson.
James Eastout.
Ashley Bradley.
Bobby Graham.
Diane Charles.
Dana Santilla.
And that is the six names? Okay, thank you. And for everyone's knowledge, these names are taken from the previous year's grand jury roll as dictated by law, and they have the opportunity to serve. Many of them choose not to, so we drew six to get one, hopefully. Any comments, discussions, or questions? If not, please entertain a motion to select or approve the six names drawn for the salary grievance committee.
I'll make that motion, Judge. Select those six people drawn today for the grievance committee.
I'll second this motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Geislin, to approve the list of six names drawn for the salary grievance committee. All those in favor? Item passes. Item nine, receive financial reports. Thank you, sir. We have financial reports from Justice of the Peace Precincts One and Two. I will remind everyone, these will be available for viewing in the county clerk's office after court. Item 10, consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheets. Ms. Harris?
We do have payroll numbers for biweekly 15.
Questions or comments from Ms. Harris? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve payroll distributions for biweekly 15. I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Geislin, seconded by Commissioner McCam, to approve the payroll distributions for biweekly 15. All those in favor? Item passes.
Thank you. We have no account cashers.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 11, consider and take action on submitted contracts.
We have one contract today with Ethos Benefit Services. They're a HR consulting company. We've been using them to help us with our, our health insurance, and the committee has found them to be incredibly valuable in, in guiding us.
The committee is recommending that we continue, continue to use, and this is for a one-year term?
Yes.
Members of the committee have any comments?
No. This contract that they presented does have an automatic renewal in it, but at the same time, we can cancel this contract with 30 days' written notice.
And the court may remember, we entered into a one-time renewal portion of the healthcare benefit with this same company for $1,500. This basically, the contract was also written for a 12-month period, and we only elected the $1,500 version at the time. Off the top of my head, I, I can't give you, maybe Anne Marie can, how much money we have saved with using the consultant, doing the interface with TAC, because prior to bringing Remisha on board, there were probably two or three dozen emails back and forth with TAC, and we were getting absolutely nowhere. So, the amount of this, total amount of this contract, we've already exceeded in savings. So, you know, I can look at this as a $0 contract. As part of the service, she will be at our educational sessions as well as open enrollment this fall to help educate our employees in the plan that we, we will be adopting during. Commissioner Gordon, at a future date. Did I cover it all, Anne Marie?
I think so, yes.
Chuck, you got anything you wanted to add?
I, I think everybody in the audience knows that insurance policies have become more complicated than the tax laws, if you, if you ask me. And like Commissioner Geislin said, we brought her on two weeks ago. She's already saved us well over 5%. So, I, I mean, I thought it was a no-brainer for us not to offer this contract. Because I think the amount of money she can save the county and the information that she can bestow upon us is going to be tremendous.
Now, I did ask her about her continuation with Ethos Benefits, and she worked for them for five years before she went to TAC, and even after law school, she's planning on staying with this organization. She's not going to law school and then leaving. This is, this is her permanent, as she said.
And does this contract provide the added benefit of setting up the additional programs that go along with, in the education portion?
All of that is in there.
All of that is in there?
All of that is in there. Medicine match, MD Live, showing the employees how to load that on their smartphone and utilize it.
Helping us with an RFP.
I'm sorry?
Helping us with an RFP.
Yes. So...
She knows insurance, and she knows how to tell us about it in layman's terms. And she's going to be here to help educate the employees on it.
And she's in here as the employee education programs, this list is specific.
Well, I know the number of TAC representatives that we have had in my term on the court. She has been the one that has been the most informative to us when she was with TAC.
That's correct.
We have had many heated discussions with TAC, and believe it or not, we can be a little con taker, and she handles us quite well. I mean, as far as being able to interface with that personality, like you were saying.
She'll be at an open enrollment, all open enrollments, to explain employees.
And then also, we're talking about maybe having some health barriers, and she will also be available for those. Prior to...
I think we need...
Prior to open enrollment.
I think we need that desperately.
And she would also be present when we get our quarterly updates from TAC on the performance of the plan and where our losses are out of skew.
So, the other day, when she was here, that was $1,500 bucks?
No.
Not just that.
Not just that day.
Oh, well, I mean, I'm just asking.
No.
But I mean, what we're talking about is a dollar a month is nothing. Let me save that much, so...
Oh, granted, what was our original projected increase?
Seven and a half percent increase on both plans from, from TAC. And the PPO plan is now at 1.8% increase, and the HMO plan is down 1 point...
2.1%.
2.1.
Is it a safe statement to say that her involvement assisted us in seeing a $100,000 reduction in the possible increase on our premium?
No, I think that's conservative.
So... Any other comments? Entertain a motion.
Oh, so moved. I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Geislin, seconded by Commissioner McCam, to approve the contract with Ethos Benefit Services with judge's authorization.
With judge's authorization.
With judge's authorization. All those in favor? Item passes. Any other contracts? Item 12, consider and take action on, on request for right-of-way permits. Thank you, ma'am. Item 13, consider and take action on submitted budget amendments?
Not this week.
None this week. Item 14, consider and take action on payment of bills.
Yes, sir. I have two sets I need approval on this morning. The first one is the second quarter state fees in the amount of $149,827.84.
Questions?
No questions yet.
Entertain a motion.
So moved to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Geislin, to approve the second quarter state fees in the amount of $149,827.84. All those in favor? Item passes.
The regular bills for this week total $190,159.60.
Commissioner Thomas, any questions?
I have no questions yet.
Commissioner Tootley?
No, sir.
Commissioner McCam?
I have none.
Commissioner Geislin?
No questions, Judge. Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Geislin, seconded by Commissioner McCam, to approve the regular bills in the amount of $190,159.60. All those, all those in favor? All those in favor? Item passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Item 15, consider and take action on submitted plats.
Precinct one, and all these are paid.
Okay.
What I got is, you ready?
Yes, sir.
Of course, as we're passing around the bills, I got a replat, there's a couple of lots. It's over in the Spring Valley Acres Estates. Looks like all the signatures are in place. It's just a replat for two lots. It's done, this guy brought it to me, and I looked at it, and we sent it around for necessary stamps and signatures. It all looks like it's in order. I'm glad if anybody wants to look at them, their receipts are paid up, like, everything's paid up. Looks like it's ready to go.
And that's the Spring Creek?
Spring Creek. Spring, or Spring Valley, I'm sorry, Spring Valley Acres.
Spring Valley and...
Spring Valley Acres.
52 and 53.
52 and 53 is what the lots are.
Creating 52 and 53, or 52R?
Yes.
52R, 53R.
2R and 53R. Any questions, Commissioner Thomas?
They're here if anybody wants to look at them.
No questions, Judge.
Entertain a motion.
So, oh, sorry.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the replat for Spring, Spring Valley Acres, lots 52, 53R.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Tootley, to approve for filing purposes only, a plat in the... a plat in the Spring Valley subdivision, creating lots 52R and 53R. All those in, all those in favor? Item passes.
Thank you, Court.
Do we have the other set of bills?
Yeah, I have one set of bills.
I'm holding on to them.
Sorry, we will...
Judge, I'm sorry.
I have the state bills down here. State fees.
I can only do one thing.
I was rushing. Item 16, open and consider bids. Ms. Nicholson?
I have three different bids that have different items that need to be addressed. The first one is a request from Titan Transportation. They would like to change their original bid amount to be for services and bid amount, just for hauling services. The plant that they were getting their pea gravel from wasn't producing the quality of pea gravel that they wanted, and they weren't able to...
Sorry, I'm trying to raise your volume.
And they weren't able to get the quality of products that they want, so they are no longer using that pit or that yard, and they are going to only deliver from Arcosa, which is one of our, I believe, that are pea gravels.
Oh, they could haul at King Sandy Gravel also, right? On that same bid?
They, on pea gravel, they will only haul from Arcosa.
Okay.
And that was...
Okay.
Because I did try to clarify that as far as pea gravel, instead of only from Arcosa.
Okay.
Questions? Looks like a cheaper rate.
Yeah.
So, entertaining motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the bid change with Titan Transport on the pea gravel hauling charges for each precinct.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Thule, to approve and award the changes that Titan Transportation has requested for the 3/8s pea gravel. All those in favor? Item passes. Next one.
The second one is for the 2019 Civil Inspection Services. We received one bid response. It's from OSCI, which is Mr. James Bailey.
Questions?
I have no questions yet.
Hearing no other, we'll entertain a motion. Oh, do you have one?
We're all okay with the $100 increase for existing residential inspections?
In this particular case, I am comfortable with it due to the fact of the past services from vendors that we've had previously, and there's been no negative that I can recall with Mr. Bailey, and just a part of doing business.
It pretty well lined up with most of the other.
Yeah, he actually did a survey from surrounding counties that do charge this to other counties.
All right, well, we didn't get that, so I'd like to see that, if you can forward that survey to... That's fine.
Any other questions? Entertaining motion?
So moved to approve, Judge, for the bid for Civil Inspection Services with James Bailey, OSCI.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Geislin, to award bid to Mr. James Bailey with OSCI for the OSSF functions, which is commonly known as the Civil Inspection Services. Any further comments?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
In the minutes, would you put the phrase "functioning as Anderson County's authorized agent", as is depicted on TCEQ? You didn't have to put that, but he is our authorized agent.
He is. Any further comments? All those in favor? Item passes. Next one.
Last one is for the 2019 Solid Waste Disposal Services. This will be for the containers at each one of the waste facilities that each precinct has. We received two responses, one from Ameritech Services and one from Republic Services.
Questions? Comments?
Can we name them out? Or can we speak to each one of them?
Yes, you can speak to whatever's on the proposal.
So, doing some figuring and talking with Republic Service, the increases from the other bidder, which was Ameritech, would increase our cost of the numbers that we've hauled since July, would increase our cost $62,000 from having all the additions down at the bottom. And then we found out that we could save anywhere from $20 to $50 for scheduled pickups, which we've done in the last two weeks with Republic Service. And so, we are trying to tighten the deal, and we have increased our funds for moving the compactor out to putting another open top in there. So, we are, we have no, and we don't have enough room for the recycle, so... But that's what, how it would affect Precinct 2, the $40 per ton.
Yes, I think it was $1,253 or $1,500 tons that we've had so far this year. Well, let me see if I can find that.
I think we're all averaging about 6 and 1/2 tons for 40-yard dumpster. That's a rough number.
My guy, Pac 13.
Did any of us have scheduled pickups already? Because all my pickups, all my dumpsters meant $400.
I would have to look at the current contract, honestly.
But I mean, I thought I was on schedule every Monday to have one pickup.
I think some of them were, and some of them weren't.
But it's still $400.
Yes. It was more than likely an agreement. It was not a true scheduled pickup due to the amount of volume and unpredictability of what you're needing.
But I mean, all of us probably going to have to have one pickup on Monday. I would think.
Yeah, and that, as far as what that schedule will be, that will be something that we, after we make a decision and an award on the bid, then those scheduled dates will be set for what works best for each precinct.
Because it's like $20 cheaper, but now that if it's a scheduled pickup, they pick it up whether it's handful or full or whatever.
That is true.
How's that work?
Republic has a comment back here. Would you stand, state your name, please?
Sir, Zach Briscoe, Bishop, Hunter, Public Services. The scheduled pickup price to the contractor proposal, basically what that does, you know, we cover a lot of area, and when we get busy, about the same time y'all get busy, here at Peak Time. So, this allows us to permanently schedule our routes going out. Now, if you don't need a haul, you can call us today before, shoot an email, and we'll readjust it. But if it's permanently scheduled in our system, it just allows us to streamline our routing.
And if we don't need, if we don't need one hauled out, we can call you and...
Cancel the pickup.
I'll let go.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, hang on just a second.
Okay. While you're working, in this bid proposal, is there any guarantees of service time, such as there was in the original contract?
As far as...
Response?
Response, a minimum 24 hours. So, if we call within 24 hours, they have to respond.
I will point this to Republic. Is that within 24 hours or within one day? There was some discussion about that a number of years ago.
Within one day.
Within one day. A little different than within 24 hours.
Well, I misunderstood the question. I was thinking maybe on a weekend or something like that. If we know when you need the service, because we know the date before, or within the 24 hours, we'll do our best to be, you know, within the next 24 hours.
Yeah, but if I send you an email on Saturday evening stating I need a pickup, you're not going to pick it up on Sunday.
No, sir, it'd be the next business day.
It'd be the next business day, Monday, at the earliest.
In some instances, there could be a call-in on Monday morning, and arrival not take place until Tuesday afternoon, and that's why the distinction between the 24 hours and the one day.
Yep. Well, they take it out of Jonathan's paycheck when he doesn't meet that. So, he doesn't miss too many in Precinct 4.
Any other discussion? Commissioner, did you talk?
Well, I can just tell you, there's an added with the other bidder, there's an added $60,920 that it would cost us if we got charged by the ton out of Precinct 2, because I have had 1,500 tons in six months, so...
You want to say that for another time? You know, Republic is sitting out here thinking about changing their bid.
Our, our...
We need a motion.
Getting nervous down here.
We need a motion before they retract their bid.
I move that we award the bid to Republic Services for waste disposal.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Thule, to report, to, excuse me, award Republic Services for the solid waste disposal bid for fiscal year 19. Pardon?
Comments?
Yeah, I'm sorry, any comments before we take...
I'd like to thank you guys for removing the rental charge. That was a bit of a surprise. I always thought that was a bit ridiculous with the volume that we were doing, and have to spend $54 a month for a rental fee. So, I appreciate that. I certainly wish recycling hadn't gone up the $29.75, but I know I'm a minority stakeholder in this discussion on recycling sense as to just Commissioner Thomas and I.
I recycle.
What?
I recycle too.
I know. It's just Commissioner Thomas and I that participate in the recycling program.
Precinct 2 recycles, but we send them to Malakoff.
Duly noted. The, for the benefit of the audience, the recycling program that we have in Precinct 1 and 4 is pretty critical because there isn't any recycling in the city of Athens, and there had been recycling for some time. And our volume is increasing because a lot of those folks are bringing it out to our precincts because they can't find a place to do it in the city of Athens. So, I ask you to encourage the city of Athens to get back into the recycling program. Therefore, since I have to pay $29.75 more than I used to, I'd like to share the cost of recycling with the city of Athens. Wouldn't you, Commissioner Thomas?
I agree.
Very good.
The recycling in Precinct 1 is very, very important. You know, they're very serious about their recycling, so...
The same thing has happened in Precinct 4.
They're very passionate people, yes. So, we appreciate getting the boxes and getting those moved quickly, because they do fill them up quickly.
Yep.
But thank you for that opportunity.
No further comments, Judge?
All those in favor? Item passes. Thank you very much, and thank you, Republic.
Thank you, Alfred.
Thank you.
Any more bids? That's it. Okay, item 17 is convened into executive session pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, regarding personnel matters, namely, review and discussion of applicants and resumes of candidates for the county veteran service officer position. And it is 928. We can convene immediately, or we can convene in 10 minutes, whatever y'all would like to do.
I need five minutes at least.
Is that your motion?
That's your motion.
Second is 10:35 motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Geislin, to enter into executive session at 10:35. We will return afterward to take any actions needed. So, all those in favor moving in? Passes.
Entertain a motion to move back into regular session.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Gisland, seconded by Commissioner McCam, to close executive session and move into regular session. All those in favor? Item passes. Item 18, which is our reconvening, consider and take action on issues related to personnel matters discussed. We did review applicants for the county veteran service officer position. We have delineated four that we would like to interview, and we will try to get that going in the next two weeks. And that'd give us plenty of time to schedule them. So other than that, really no further action is needed? Is there any discussion before we move to our final item? If not, item 19, consider and take action to adjourn.
So moved, seconded.
Motion made by Commissioner Tootley, seconded by Commissioner Thomas to adjourn. All those in favor? Item passes.
And for those still here, if you want to have lunch...